Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call the meeting to order. Pennington County Planning Commission Meeting, September 26, 2022. Recommendations to the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on October 4, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms that are available in the back of the room, and if you would turn those in, it helps us for organization for the meeting, if you care to speak on an item. Road call. We're missing Mike Lewis today, and Mike had notified us that he would still be out of town today on a family matter, so we're going to go with that. Approval of the September 12, 2022 minutes of the commission. Does everyone have an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Any changes? Clerical errors? Hearing none, with Chair address a motion to approve amendments?
I move to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Moved in second to approve the September 12, 2022 minutes of the Planning Commission discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The agenda. Have you all had a chance to go through your agenda? Any clerical errors or that sort of thing in the agenda that you'd like to note at this time? Chair would address a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda for today's meeting. That's items three through, we got 20 today. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, we'd like to review the consent agenda. Thank you, Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 9712 for Loretta Daigle to review a bed and breakfast in agriculture district, and staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 9712 with the property owner's concurrence. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1301 for Loretta Daigle to review a vacation home rental in an agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 1301 with the property owner's concurrence. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 20-03 for Scott and Janice Harris to review multifamily dwelling in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 20-03 with conditions. And finally, item six is conditional use permit review CU 2020 for Larry and Diane Matthews to allow multifamily dwelling in a low-density residential district. The staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit CU 2020 to the October 11, 2022 Planning Commission meeting with the applicant's concurrence.
Thank you, Brittany. Staff like to have any of those pulled?
No, not at this time.
Anybody from the commission like to pull an item? Anybody from the audience that would desire to pull an item? Before we vote on it, if you have any clerical errors, I'd like to hear them now. If not, we'll address the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, items three through six.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent calendar, items three through six on the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On to number seven, and we do have a person on Zoom for number seven. Go ahead, Cody.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. So, item seven is conditional use permit CU 22-39. It's to allow an existing cabin to remain and be used as storage only on the subject property. I believe this was heard before the Planning Commission. Previously, there were some questions on the septic system that Commissioner Johnson had. It says the water to the small cabin is turned off, and the property owner stated that they just store personal items and supplies to fix and maintain the vacation home rental there. Downside wastewater treatment installer turned the water in the small cabin to verify that it is indeed hooked to the main septic system, and then the water was turned off again. So, to answer your question, that small cabin is hooked to the main, to the main septic system on the property. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 22-29 with conditions.
Questions for Cody. Cody, have you looked at the capacities for that, and do they meet what the request is here, the conditional use permit?
So, this was, this was Kelsey's request, and I would assume that she looked into it when she looked into it and didn't have, if there had been concerns with the septic sizing, she would have.
That's what I thought. She did, she did note to me that it was capable of 12 or 13, and I do know, I'm aware of this particular installer, very good certified installer, so I have no questions that the capability is the proper one, so I just wanted to get that at least in my, I believe it was 12 or 13 was the number. Does that sound right to you?
I believe so. That, and with storage cabins like this, there's people in the county who have bathrooms and garages all the time. It doesn't do anything to the septic system, it just decides. Again, this conditional use permit is to keep track so that we can make sure that they don't actually have living quarters in it, so we can verify in the future through reviews that they, that it's sized properly.
Any other questions for Cody or comments? Chair would address a motion if we're ready.
I move approval of CU 2239.
Second.
Moved in second to approve conditional use permit CU 2239. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. On to item number eight. Go ahead.
Megan Talmadge, Planner. Conditional use permit CU 22-42 is to allow an accessory structure as a primary structure on the subject property. The applicant is Bryant Wagner. The lot size is .69 acres. The current zoning is suburban residential district. The existing land use is vacant, and the access will be off Countryside Boulevard. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They are on the screen. I will read the staff responses. One, no. It appears that by allowing this conditional use permit, it should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Two, no. The requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Shops are an accessory use in suburban residential. Three, no. The requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Four, yes. The purpose of the proposed structure is for personal storage. Access will be off Countryside Boulevard. Five, yes, the requested use should not significantly impact traffic congestion. Six, yes, the property is zoned suburban residential district. The shop as a primary structure is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. Seven, yes, the future land use is suburban residential district. Allowing this conditional use permit should be consistent with the current comprehensive There is currently no building permit or onsite wastewater system. There is an expired stormwater permit that will need to, and they will need to reapply with the building permit when they cement one. There were no major comments or concerns in the interdepartmental review. On September 20th, staff visited the property. It is currently vacant. The applicant's single-family residence is on the adjacent property, and staff has received no objections or concerns regarding this request at the time of staff report.
Thank you, Megan. Questions for Megan on this one?
I have one. Megan?
Yes.
What exactly is an undetermined flood hazard?
There's a zone in Pennington County where they haven't done a in-depth flood analysis is my understanding of that.
So, there isn't a, there isn't a flood hazard? The flood hazard hasn't been determined, is that it?
Right. FEMA hasn't studied that portion of the county, so they haven't drawn in any kind of special flood hazard area.
All right. That's fine. Thanks.
Other questions for Megan? Discussion. Anyone in the audience here to speak on this one? Item number eight. If not, the chair will address a motion on this matter on CU 22-42.
I move approval.
Second. Moved to approve conditional use permit CU 22-42 per staff's recommendations with 10 conditions. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you, Megan. On to item number nine.
Conditional use permit CU 22-43 is to allow a guest house on the subject property. The applicant is, excuse me, the applicant is Haiki and Jolene Nielsen. Their agent is Ryan Kelly. The lot size is 4.54 acres, and the current zoning is rural residential district. The existing land use is vacant, and the access will be off of Old Hill City Road. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They are on the screen. I'll read the staff responses. One, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Two, no, the requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Three, no, the requested use should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Four, yes, the subject property will be served by private onsite wastewater system in one. Five, there is a correction on this. There is actually not currently an existing approach, but when there is an approach, it will, will provide ingress and egress as to minimize traffic congestion on Old Hill City Road. Guest houses are used similarly to single-family residences and should not generally generate significant amounts of traffic to the property. Six, yes, the requested use conforms to all applicable regulations of rural residential district with an approved conditional use permit. Seven, yes, future land use is identified as rural residential district. The guest house is consistent with this district with an approved conditional use permit. Staff reviewed criteria, and it meets all the uses for a guest house. The current property is vacant, and there is no onsite wastewater system. There were no major comments or concerns in the interdepartmental review. On Sep, on September 20th, the applicants, or on September 1st, the applicants requested to construct a detached garage with living quarters to utilize as a guest house. On September 20th, the staff performed a site visit on the subject property. The agent would like to apply for the guest house and single-family residence at the same time. They may apply for the single-family residence before the guest house as of this point.
That it, Megan?
That's it.
Thank you, Megan.
Mr. Chair.
Questions? Go ahead.
Megan, question. So, am I understanding they're wanting to build the guest house before the main house? Is that what I'm understanding, or did I miss some of that in there?
They want to build it at the same time.
Oh, build it at the same time. Do they have a proposed size of the home, the main home versus the guest home?
Yes. I currently do not have the size of the main home, but the guest home will be around 830 square feet, I believe.
Thank you.
Other questions for Megan? Megan, I guess I assume the same thing based on your conditions, the way you wrote them, that within 90 days of this, if it's approved, that you require an application for a building permit for the house and the detached garage, which would include the guest?
Yes.
So, since it is a separate or blank piece of property, so that you have a primary structure on it before you got a guest house, I assume that's where you're headed?
Yes. Well, with the, the statute that states that you cannot apply for a, for the building permit for the conditional use permit, I did recommend that they apply for their single-family residence before and get started. Or I gave them the option that they could do that.
And where I was headed with it is, I assume we can answer then Commissioner Lassiter's question by that, we'll have something in a request for a building permit that's going to tell us the square feet in the primary residence.
Yes.
Okay, good. I thought your condition is headed that way. Any other questions for Megan? Thank you, Megan. It's open for discussion. Anyone in the audience want to speak on this item? From the commission, any discussion? Hearing none, the chair would address a motion. Move approval of CU 22-43.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Moved and second to approve conditional use permit CU 22-43 per staff's recommendation with 11 conditions. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. On to item number 10.
Morning Commissioners. Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Item number 10 is conditional use permit 22-41 to allow a contractor's storage yard on the subject property for the Wild Springs Solar Project. The applicant is AM'S Construction. Their agent is Patrick Farrell. The landowner is Gail Bruins. Location of the property is 23015 161st Avenue, which is south of New Underwood. It is currently 80 acres zoned agriculture district, and it is vacated of any structures or utilities. Access is provided off of 161st Avenue, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They're on the screen. I'll read staff's responses starting at number one. No, allowing the conditional use permit should not, should not be detrimental or endanger the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, no, the requested use should not have any negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the neighborhood. Number three, no, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, the property is currently vacant of any structures or utilities. The use of portlets will be, will serve as a means of onsite wastewater disposal. Number five, yes, ingress and egress will be provided via approved approaches off of 161st Street. The applicant has proposed 330 parking spaces per the attached site plan. Number six, yes, the property is zoned agriculture district. The requested use may be allowed with an approved conditional use permit. And lastly, number seven, yes, the future land use of the subject property is agriculture. Allowing the CUP is consistent with the current comprehensive plan viewed to 2040. As I said, the property is currently vacant of any structures or utilities. So, on the screen, I do have a general location of the contractor's storage yard. You can see outlined in orange is the property, and then the portion that they proposed to use is highlighted in red. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway stated that approach permits are on file with the Highway Department. County Fire had a slight concern, stating that the applicant should have an emergency evacuation in place. He's concerned about this drainage right here, just south of the proposed location, and that is included as a condition of approval. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is proposing to utilize 6.7 acres of the subject property as a contractor's storage yard, supporting the Wild Springs Solar Project. Per the applicant's site plan, the yard will have 330 parking spaces for office trailers, three fuel tanks with secondary containment, and six Conex storage containers. Access appears to be adequate for requested use. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 22-41 with conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Is there any conditions to take apart or remove the laydown area after the site is completed?
There are.
Other questions for Kevin? Kevin, I assume that parking surface is probably gravel. I didn't notice.
Right.
So, that it's not a marked type parking surface. It's we, we require them to give a certain amount of area, and they're going to use this as their main, what would you call it, staging area?
Correct. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any other questions for Kevin? And, and this is a short review period too, right? May 8 of 2023?
Right. They plan to start staging equipment towards the end of this year, and then have it up and running next year, so that's when the review will take place.
Anyone in the audience care to comment on this item? Item number 10. Any other questions for Kevin? Any other discussion? Chair address a motion.
I move that we approve conditional use permit 22-41.
Second.
Moved in second to approve conditional use permit CU 22-41 with 15 conditions per staff's recommendation. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. On to item number 11.
Item number 11 is Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment 22-13 to amend the existing plan unit development to reduce the setbacks from access roads from 10 feet to 5 feet. The applicant is Blue Wing Recreation Corporation. Their agent is Ron Roskinak. Location of the property is north of Calumet Road, south of Sheridan Lake. It is currently 67.12 acres zoned plan unit development district. Current or existing land use is Blue Wing Recreation Resort, and there is special flood hazard area on the property. The Planning Commission approved Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment 21-13 last October with conditions. Staff did review those and found that all but one of those conditions are being met, and that is the setback requirement, the 10-foot setback requirement from roads. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. The county fire administrator did note that a reduction in setbacks is a bad idea because it affects the size of apparatus responding, spaces to buildings, and improvements, just to name a few. There were no other objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant has requested to reduce the setbacks of interior roads from 10 feet to 5 feet in order to, in order to bring existing structures into compliance. Interior roadways in this development vary from 9 feet to 6 feet. The proposed 5-foot setback would allow emergency responders between 19 and 26 feet of road width to navigate. Staff has changed condition number six to read that the setbacks for all future recreation sites, a structure shall be a minimum of 20 feet between units, 5 feet between, from access roads, 0 feet from interior lot lines, 25 feet from exterior lot lines, and 50 feet from existing and relocated section lines. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and recommends approval of Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment 21, 22-13 with conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I'll be abstaining from vote. Potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. We get that for the record then, Jerry? Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Jason, can you give me that over again? What's the major conflict on there? It's just the roads because of the way it was all laid out and the lot lines? Is that kind of what biggest issue is?
Correct. If you've ever been back there, you can see that there, the lot lines really aren't delineated out there. Everybody just buys kind of a portion of the property, so that's what the reason behind the setbacks are. Some people, some existing structures have been there for a long time that don't meet that 10-foot setback from the roads, and most recently, we have had a person that built something out there that was within that 10-foot setback.
Did they get a building permit for that?
They did after the fact.
Is that the one that caused, started causing some of this problem?
Correct.
Can you show me which one that is, and what did they build?
Uh, you can bring up Rapid Map and zoom in.
Is this the only structure that has caused that problem?
Like I said, there were existing structures out there that didn't meet those 10-foot setbacks, so.
Prior to our ordinance and things of that nature.
Right. Prior to this incident, yeah.
Is that one that built without a building permit? Are they on our docket any time in the near future for, for fines or anything of that nature?
No, they just paid the penalty fee for, which is double, the building permit fee. This is not a recent picture, but it is still fairly accurate. This is from 2018, so this structure most likely didn't comply with that 10-foot setback when it existed, so.
What is it? Is it a house?
It's more of an overhang, kind of a carport for them to pull the RV back into. There are living quarters here and an open outside deck here.
Okay, well, that answers all my questions for now.
But you can see the structure here likely doesn't meet the 10 feet either. I mean, there's this multiple out there that if, if this were approved, it would bring a lot of these structures into compliance.
Is that opening the door for anything else? I mean, are we doing this to put everything into compliance to allow for something else to transition out there, or is this just solely so that it's just in compliance?
So that they wouldn't be in compliance, so that we could approve a building permit for this most recent structure.
Which, which, which structure? Is it that one that you're talking about right there?
The one right here.
The one that they're paying the fines on?
Right.
So, what happens if we don't approve the setback? They got to tear that down?
Well, he would have to go through his plan unit development and bring everything into compliance, because those were the conditions of approval when it was enacted.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Jason? I have a comment as well as a couple of comments. One, Kevin, thank you for abstaining. I just want for the record, the applicant, here he is, a county commissioner. I want to get it on the record that that's the case that we're reviewing. And secondly, I want to comment, I'm not sure, I'm not in bed with the emergency director, and we start looking at these clearances for vehicles. Now, that's all well and good, well, nobody's parked there, but we have all sorts of people that are guests in places, and out-of-town guests that don't realize what we deal with in the way of fire danger. And they park, and they pull in with campers, they pull in with trucks, as I've indicated on some of the UTV or vacation home rentals. I've seen semis drop off UTVs and ATVs. It's getting to where, and these people just shut them off and leave them. So, here's our emergency people with bigger equipment. They're going to have to navigate around that stuff to get to it. We start cutting these setbacks. You've got a problem all over. We start making it a precedent that we just look the other way on setbacks or approve them so that we can get things going. I don't think that's a very good idea from a safety viewpoint, and we, that is one of our responsibilities as a county, health and safety.
Right. Mr. Chair, you made a statement, so I just want to clarify, because you did say as a Commissioner- Because you did say as a commissioner that owns this, is the commissioner representing this company, or is the commissioner?
No, I said the applicant is. The applicant's name here is listed as the commissioner, isn't it?
Right.
Can you clarify that?
Agent.
Ron Roskineck is the owner of Blue Wing or one of the owners of this PUD.
And built that?
I believe he established this, yes. He didn't build the structure, no? Is that what you're asking?
That's what I was getting at, okay. He established the PUD out there, but he didn't just go ahead and build out there? Okay. That's almost what I was catching, so that's what I wanted to clarify.
I didn't, that's a good point. We don't want to lean in the wrong direction. Being an applicant or an agent, it does not mean that he built this that's in violation.
Tracking.
Thank you.
Jason, one other final thing. That road right there, Blue Wing Road, where that structure is, what's the width of that road right in that area? Because I know, I heard you say 6 feet and 9 feet and...
So that one is actually 16 feet wide. You can see other roads here like these two-track trails, more or less. These are the ones that I measured out roughly at 9 feet. And with the 5-foot setbacks, if it's approved, again, that leaves your 26 feet or 19 feet. The reason that I recommend approval of this is because in previous requests, Jerome Harvey has required 18 feet of right-of-way for emergency vehicle access.
So one of our options is to make them widen that Blue Wing Road 18 feet? Right?
Currently at 16 feet, and then if you had the 5-foot setbacks, you would have an additional 10 feet.
Right, but we can make them widen that. Could we make them widen that road to 18 feet to meet that minimal requirement? And just, that way, it's 18 feet for the emergency vehicles to be able to pass through there. Or right now, the way it is, if an emergency happens right now, the emergency vehicles are going to go through that whole thing wherever they go. I'm not in favor of doing it for the whole PUD, because if we've got 5-foot roads or 6-foot roads, I have a problem with that, because you're right, apparatus isn't going to be able to get in there to fight fire. I'm trying to figure out what's the most appropriate for an entire development like that, whenever you have 6-foot roads, whenever you need apparatus to get in.
I see what you're saying. To only improve this one road, I don't think is going to do much good, because as you can see, the density in here is pretty high, and the majority of these home sites are served by these secondary roads and not so much Blue Wing Road.
I just know one of the other concerns that the commission has had with roads and things, and this commissioner's been, I've been one that's been concerned with it, so is Commissioner Ross Connect as the Klondike Road area, and making sure that fire apparatus can get in there. I don't know if I am of the mindset that we should approve this, because we approve this, we give them that pushback on those, reduce that setback down, then what are we doing? We're causing a problem further down the road, I think, if somebody else wants to come in and build, or it opens the door for someone else to build right up next to the road if we open it up in there, right? Essentially?
Right.
Creating more congestion in the area, so I don't know if I can be a, I don't know if I can be a yes vote on this one. Just my input after some of the other areas that we've been working with with high density, that the roads aren't done right, or, you know, for the amount of people that are in them, I don't think I can vote yes on this one.
Any other questions or comments? Jason, can you give me an idea how, what's the age of this PUD? I couldn't figure that out from reading it. I don't want to hold somebody responsible for something, like trying to build a new wheel after you've already got the cart built, you know?
I think it was established in the early 90s.
In the middle 90s, you think?
Early to mid 90s, yep.
Lot of difference in conditions and thoughts about, and even the size of the safety equipment by then. I'll bet the ambulances are twice as wide as they were then, so. With the one, I'm thinking of the 1-ton units, and they go up to that 8-foot 6 now versus the old van style that they had.
Yeah, but in the 90s, we were driving those big units. I was running ambulances in the 90s.
Bigger cars, bigger vehicles, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the only one that I could be okay with it, I guess, since the road 16 feet, is just that Blue Wing Road, but allowing it for the entire, I think that's a bad precedence. That's just my two cents.
And I'm going to throw mine in. I certainly would like to see the road district make sure that there's some regulation of the parking, because that's the biggest danger I see in allowing very tight setbacks and emergency equipment. And these folks, some of them, they mean well, but they'll park them right there, they'll have their guests park, or they'll have a party, and you can't get through but with one vehicle. Now, Klondike Road, that's almost just one vehicle in the first place without the parking, so that's maybe more extreme than we've got here, so. But I am concerned about the emergency access to that, like the emergency director. Anybody else want to comment?
So to follow Commissioner Lassiter's line of thinking, would you like me to reword the condition that it only applies to Blue Wing Road?
Blue Wing Road is pretty much 16 feet.
Right.
All the way through.
Right.
That's the only one I'm comfortable with. Any of the other ones, I think you set yourself up for choke points and pinch points if you allow people to build right up to those roads. I mean, that's just, I know that we've already got structures that are right next to them, but if you just allow everyone to potentially build right next to them, we might have even more of a problem. That's just my input on there. So it's, I mean, I'm one of six of us today, so.
My next question would be how many more sites are left to build out there? Any idea?
I don't know how many sites. It's hard to keep track of.
This is probably illegal.
And then that may add into my next question. I was going to ask whether we can, in a PUD, even though we don't have PUDs anymore, whether we can just limit one road within them, since they originally established them based on their own desire? So that would be my question, why against limiting the one road?
That's all I've got, but thanks for the info.
Anybody want to make a motion, or want to think about this longer, or look at it again? As I said, my biggest concern is the emergency services. Other than that, we're out in the country, it's been around for a long time. I don't, I mean, they certainly had their plans when they started out, and it's difficult to stay with them. We've seen people, Commissioner Lassiter's reviewed them, they put their steps right on the road right away, so. I mean, that's, we've had zeros when the house was done, and the reason is, we do not require, do we yet, to have an engineer or produce one corner on the property before it starts a building, right, to measure off of? If you produced one corner, you should be able to put the building in the right place, is what I'm getting at. If you're a contractor, and we now have qualified contractors, if we require them to have one corner located by survey, they should be able to put these places in the right place. But we don't do that. I'm done. Anybody else for comment? Anybody from the audience? Then we've got to come up with a motion with something to do with this particular item.
I move that we continue this item to the next meeting to ask Mr. Roskineck to be president. I don't, I don't really want to deny it without him here to defend it, so that makes me somewhat uncomfortable. I guess I'm not supposed to talk after I make a motion, am I?
Is that a second? Is there a second? No, but that's all part of your motion, your reason. Is there a second to that, to continue?
A second.
Moved in second, and now it's open for discussion.
Jason, so if we do nothing, what are the consequences realistically?
If we do nothing, I can't issue a building permit for the structure that was placed there. Then we'll have to pursue that through the ordinance violation procedures that we have in place through 106. Most likely, they would have to move that structure to meet the setback.
Does this PUD have covenants?
No, it's just the PUD.
The road district.
Just the road district, correct.
I don't know, is there any way we can request that road district do something on parking to make sure that the access to the emergency is allowable? I don't know, I've never heard of it being done before, that we request, because there's a separate government entity. Can we request such a thing?
See if they have bylaws or any regulations that cover their road districts.
Yeah. That might be in support of the continuance, so at least we could review with the road district whether they can enforce these things and make it safe for these emergency vehicles to get through. In that case, I would support the motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, one abstention. Oh, and that is, I assume, continued to the next meeting? Yes. Thank you. Item number 12.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I recommend that we discuss both items 12 and 13 as one and vote on them separately.
All right. The motion is to waive the rules to discuss item number 12 and 13, as they have a similar applicant and a similar agent, and that will take a 2/3 vote for that motion. In that case, what, four of us have to vote? Any discussion? Oh, excuse me, a second. We need a second.
Thank you.
All right, moved in second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will discuss items number 12 and 13 together, and we will go back as an individual item on the agenda and act on them accordingly. Thank you. Cody?
Cody Sack, our middle planner. Item 12 is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-18. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from ranch district to rural residential district. The applicant is TDG Real Estate, Mike and Lisa Gennaro. The agent is ATM Design Solutions. Location of the property is 24404 Oak Meadows Road. Involves 10.09 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Oak Meadows Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, current zoning is agriculture district, which requires a 10-acre lot size. They're proposing to do rural residential, which requires a 3-acre lot size. The maximum density for single-family residence is 0.1 an acre. It's 1 for rural residential. Looking at the surrounding zoning and future land use in the area, there is rural residential within the area, actually borders the property. And existing land uses are agriculture and residential. This was rather often in our partner view, there were no major comments or concerns that were received. Utilities in the area, Oak Meadows Road is a 24-foot wide gravel road, and then there's a 40-foot wide private access easement that accesses the lot. It'll be a private water and sewer system. The applicant is proposing to reconfigure lot lines to create two lots. That's a layout plan LPL 22-34 that was approved in-house within the planning department. You guys will be, the planning commission will be seeing the, I believe it's a minor plat that'll become, a preliminary plat that'll be coming before the planning commission. Again, rural residential allows single-family residents on large lots. Staff finds no significant issues with applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing land uses within the area, and is supported by existing roads and infrastructure. And then item 13 is Rezone RG 22-24. It's to rezone 10.69 acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. Again, the applicant is Mike and Lisa Gennaro. Again, the majority of the properties within the area are agriculture residential. This was rather often in our partner view, and there were no major comments or concerns that were received. The only difference between the two requests is the comprehensive plan amendment only affects that larger lot where the rezone has the little triangle piece with it. But again, it's being rezoned to rural residential. So staff is recommending approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-18 and Rezone RG 22-24.
Thank you. Questions for Cody?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Kevin.
So if they have over 10 acres and they're looking at creating two lots, why are we not going with the ranch yet?
So what it is, is the two lots is, there's three acres, so there's three properties involved in the plating. There's this little triangle, there's the larger lot here, then there's this one in yellow here. This is being, some of this larger lot is being incorporated into this rural residential lot as well. So one lot was 3 acres, and the other one, I think, is a little above the, it might be above 5, but they just wanted to rezone it all to rural residential.
I found that really hard to follow in the information in the packet, as to what lots we were actually looking at and what the intended end result of that all would be. So I noticed that there was, you know, showing that other lot that is in rural residential currently listed as Track B, but Track A has no size on it. What properties were actually attached to what is a little hard to follow in the packet.
Okay. Other questions for Cody? I had the same thing. I was looking at the Rapid Map one. So the little piece of property is the one there that's in blue, and that does affect what we're doing on both?
Just on the rezone, that one's just being rezoned, because the future land use for that little piece was rural residential. So the comprehensive plan amendment involves just the larger 10-acre lot, but the rezone affects the 10-acre lot in that little, I think it's like 0.1.
Now, I understand. But it is the same applicant and the same agent for that little triangle then as the big one?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And so we basically, when we're looking to act on number 13, it's included. Number 12, or number 14, it's not, no, excuse me. Number 12, it's included in number 13, and it's not?
Other way around. Other way around. 12, the little lot's not included.
Okay.
And 13, the little lot is included.
All right, that's, I see, I would add it backwards. Okay, does everybody understand what just got put on the table there? I do now, thank you. Any other items or questions for Cody? Thank you. Discussion is over on item 12 and 13 combined, and now we're talking about item number 12. Any continued discussion on 12? If not, the chair to address a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of CA 22-18.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-18 per staff's recommendations. Discussion. Anyone in the audience want to comment on this before we act on it? Hearing nothing? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 13. No?
Yep.
Yes. I got it. Have to put so many markers in here when we do it.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Rezone RG 22-24.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Rezone RG 22-24 per staff's recommendations. Anyone from the audience want to comment on this matter before we act upon it? Anybody from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 40. Is that you too, Cody?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a similar motion to discuss items 14 and 15 as one and vote on them individually.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Moved in second to waive the rules so that we may discuss items number 14 and 15 as together, and the reason being that they have the same applicant, same agent. Discussion. Anyone in the audience want to weigh in on that? Anyone in the audience want to weigh in on that discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We will be discussing items number fourteen and fifteen together. Uh, I do have your speaker request for you folks in the audience and we will go back and act upon them individually. And that vote was unanimous, so the motion carried. Thank you. Go ahead, Cody.
Okay, so item fourteen is comprehensive plan amendment C A twenty-two dash nineteen. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from ranch at district and rural residential district to low density residential district. The applicant and landowner is Free Range Rentals LLC. The agent is Davis Engineering. Location of the property is two three seven zero seven Burke Fork Road. It involves approximately seven point two acres. Uh, currently zoned agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Burke Fork Ro- Burke Fork Road and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, surrounding zoning in the area is rural residential agriculture district planning and development open space with the main land uses of agriculture and residential and then open spaces uh, United States Forest Service public land. Uh, this was rather often in our department view. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. Uh, Burke Fork Road is approximately twenty to twenty-four foot wide gravel road and then there will be an access easement uh, to the, to uh, the properties. Infrastructure, there will be a, it'll be private water and sewer. This was rather often in our department view. There were no major objections or concerns that were received. Uh, the applicant is proposing to subdivide into three lots, uh, layout plan L P L twenty-two dash forty-four. So the planning commission will see the preliminary plan whenever that uh, is submitted to the planning office. Uh, low density residential uses it allows uh, single family residents. Uh, staff finds no significant issues with the request as it appears to be in harmony with existing land uses within the area and is supported by existing roads and infrastructure. And then item fifteen is rezone R Z twenty-two dash twenty-five. It's to rezone approximately seven point two acres from agriculture district to low density residential district. Uh, again, the applicant is and landowner is Free Range Rentals. Again, the majority of the properties in the area are agriculture and residential use with public land uh, surrounding that. This was rather often in our department view. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. Uh, so staff is recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment um, C A twenty-two dash nineteen and rezone R Z twenty-two dash twenty-five.
Thank you, Cody.
Mr. Chair.
Questions for Cody?
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead, Travis.
All right, Cody, question for you. Is that whole, so I'm looking at this sheet here and it's got lot A, B, and C. Is A, B, and C seven acres or is the B and C gonna be seven acres or it's gonna be split in half?
So the lots A, B, and C, that's the proposed layout plan. So that's the, right now, there's two properties. It's kind of hard to, hard to see. There's the, the larger property and there's a small property. They, they're condensing that into one and then subdiv- subdividing it into three lots. So that's the A, B, and C is their proposed.
So each lot will be at least three acres?
Each lot, no. The, two lots will be one to one and a half acres and there'll be one that's three acres.
So they're, okay, maybe I read this wrong here. So they wouldn't uh, reason, they wouldn't uh, go from ranch yet to rural residential, right?
To low density residential. So the future land, the future land use, it's, it's.
I read it wrong. I'm like, wait a minute, because it's gotta be three acres. All right, fair enough. That was my que- I got that clarified. Now I know what I'm thinking, sorry.
Do you have some questions for Cody?
Um, I have one. Um, but they could come in with a plat that says that there could be fourteen half acre lots if we rezone this.
Right.
So yes and no. Uh, the state requires a one acre septic size unless you're on a private water system. And with the, and there's requirements for the creek in there. So by the time that you, you have to be a hundred feet from the high water line for a septic system. So even if you were on a private well, by the time you put a house, a driveway and the septic system in there, you're probably not gonna meet that hundred foot setback on a half acre lot. So and these guys, the owners of the property, um, they own multiple vacation home rentals. So they have to, i- i- if, I believe that's what they're proposing to do on this part, on these properties. They have to maintain that one acre lot size for vacation home rentals.
Um, yeah, I don't, I guess I don't, I remember the roughness we had out in Rapid Valley when we went from agriculture down to half acre lots, so um, I don't like this. This is a rural setting. I don't like these little lots. I'd rather see the rural residential.
Mr. Chair to tack in on that one. Is there any water, water system or sewage system out in that area that anybody could tack into, like, like in the valley?
Not that I'm aware of. They would have to come and put their own, and any developer would have to come and put their own public water system.
They would have to do that. And, and I'm not saying that to dismin- diminish the thought process. It's just Rapid Valley already has a public water system in that area. That's why they could do it. This would take a lot more infrastructure bu- for fourteen lots. Is that what you figured out? If they were gonna go down, that would take a lot more infrastructure for just fourteen lots. I don't know if that would be financial, um, feasible. However, I, I am in the same mindset of, you know, this is a rural area and starting to make it where you can pack things in there. I think it's get, it's gonna be concerning.
Uh, they also wouldn't be able to do fourteen acres because that's a dead end road system and they're at twenty-nine lots as it sits now. So if they did fourteen, it'd be above the, the forty lot rule.
Okay, in fact, that brings my question. The planning department does consider a, a no outlet road. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Burnt Fork.
Yep.
And you say that they have twenty-nine residential units, you think, or give it to?
Yeah, I believe it's twenty-nine. Um, and I believe with what they're proposing, it put it out, with, with what they're proposing, it put them at thirty-one or thirty-two lots on the, on the property.
And then we have not done any changes to the forty unit rule at this particular point in time. It is being reviewed, but there's no changes to it?
I don't believe there's been any changes to it, no.
No. Okay, that's another item that's on the table. This is a no outlet road for the planning department. Any other questions for Cody? I do have a number of speaker request forms and I'd like to get to those. Mark? Anderson? Is it?
Yep.
Just introduce yourself, please, for the record and then go ahead and take off.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name's Mark Anderson. Uh, I um, probably the oldest property owner, longest-handed property owner. I own the uh, property to the west, immediately to the west of the, or at least about half of it. And uh, I guess I rise to express my concerns about really changing, as you've alluded to, the real pastoral setting of the place and time to actually turn it into, you know, more of an urban setting with that many potential lots, but also even the three acre lots. And so, uh, you know, I've owned my property since uh, nineteen seventy and uh, anyway, beautiful place. Nice lovely pasture. That won't be the case anymore. I also would express two other concerns. And these are kind of questions that maybe they're gonna be addressed. I don't know, but the, uh, with what's happening, and I think you've al- already alluded to it with these vacation rentals, people come in with U T Vs. We see groups of twenty-eight TVs going up the draw there, clouds of dust. And so the rental, that seems to be what people want to do. In fact, I see people coming from Iowa and Kansas bringing these things. And Burke Fork Gulch and looping over to China Gulch is a, a favorite uh, route that they take. So there's gonna be a lot of pressure on the little road system that we have to, have to maintain. So that's one issue. The other issue is the watershed drainage area of the um, Burke Fork was above this property is only about a little more than three square miles. So that means the water uh, that's in the groundwater is, doesn't have a large area for replenishment. So too many wells and too many septic tanks um, can have an impact there on that um, that system. So my concern was, it seems like this is kind of coming at us pretty fast. I'd like to make sure I understand thoroughly and maybe my colleagues, other property owners feel the same way. But I'm, I'm not sure exactly what's gonna happen. This thing about half acre lots came up and I understand the, the state requirement of a minimum one acre, but um, anyway, it's a, it's a big change to that, that setting. We ought to think through it, understand all the aspects. That's all I have to say.
Excuse me. Questions for Mark? Mark, I've got one. I live up in that area. I live over towards uh, Slate Creek Dam. And I know it's difficult for some of the people to understand immense pressure we're getting right now with the U T V thing. And then it doesn't matter whether it's dead end roads, what roads, they're just out there hunting and if they can find mud, all the better. So I, I, I understand what you're saying on that. Just the U T Vs, let alone if the U T Vs were at rental units within your area, even exacerbate the problem, so.
Well, if you're familiar with the area, you know, just as you come out of Burke Fork Gulch, right across the way is some vacation rental properties.
Yes.
And any holiday weekend, they don't just come in with one trailer. It's oftentimes four. I'm not trying to deny people their good time, but this is really tearing up the forest roads. I hope the Forest Service can move to try to reduce that. But anyway, that, this is not for your action, I know, but it's going to bring more U T Vs to that draw. And uh, you know, just my free advice to the proponents is, I was involved with um, um, purchasing my grandfather's homestead and they subdivided it all out. And then they offered for sale individual parcels. And then they came back and said, okay, auction it off as a whole unit. It sold for far more money as a whole unit than subdivided it up. I think the demand actually out there is for these smaller. I mean, who wants to move out to the country and go to the woods and just be in another urban setting? I mean, personally, I think, that's just my free advice. I think they'd get more money out of the whole deal by selling it as a whole unit.
Can, can I ask you, would you support uh, a smaller subdivision uh, or less of a subdivision than the point five? Uh, the, there is uh, um, point three, uh, three acre subdivision and it looks like it would be available to them. Is that correct? Is the three acre available to this site because it's agriculture right now or not?
Uh, Cody's talking about planner. So when, we have pre meetings with the applicants, um, to, to discuss, we, we go by what they're proposing on their plat. And they're proposing one to one and a half acre lots, which wouldn't meet the requirement for the three. One lot would, but the other two would, would not. Um, so that's where the, he made the decision to still go forward with the three lots and the low density residential.
Don't leave. That's kind of where I was headed with this. Um, what's being proposed is one thing. I'm just saying, uh, most of the folks, even in the situation that you just explained, still agree with the property owner's rights to subdivide to a, a, a level.
Yeah, one question I had too, uh, was, will there be a requirement for um, paved roads and curb and gutter?
Uh, Cody's talking about planner. No, there wouldn't be any requirement for, for that sort of infrastructure out there.
I don't know what the threshold is, but that was the case for the Burlington subdivision, which is to the south of me. And they even talked about having street lights. So I'm, I, this is what my concern is, is it's gonna turn into a neighborhood urban setting that really belongs in a city.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Uh, next one's Gary Solomon. Just introduce yourself for the record, Gary, and go ahead and.
Good morning. I, I'm Gary Solomon. I live, uh, we've had a home um, at the upper portion of uh, Burke Fork for twenty-two years. And uh, I, I think I can speak for a lot of my neighbors that the reason most of us, you know, own a home up there is that we have five to six acres and we bought it as a rural setting. Um, if, if we wanted to be in one acre and half acre lots and have them around us, we'd have probably chose a spot right at Hill City or in Hill City where it would be um, easier access. So it, it would drastically change what we all appreciate. Um, so I'm, I'm adamantly against the rezoning of this and um, we gotta realize that as a parcel sold, um, if it's divided into three, three and um, one or whatever, uh, that opens the door that the next person can further subdivide that. Um, so there is a real um, chance of a, quite an amount of homes up there. Our upper area, if you will, has a, a very narrow road. There's many, many spots where if you meet somebody, one person absolutely has to put two tires in the ditch. That's what we've got up there. And I'm, I'm just thinking, if we allow this rezoning, what if uh, one of my twenty neighbors or myself included wants to chunk off an acre or a half acre up in that um, other area? It just sets a whole precedent that it's okay for all of us to um, chunk off a one or two acres and make a buck and change it for all our neighbors. So that's, that's why I'm adamantly against this whole thing. There's just, it's opening a future precedent. There's another neighbor that owns quite a chunk below that there, which is all metal. Um, they could be in, in two months asking to do, I'm not sure the acreage there is quite large. We could potentially have, you know, somebody requesting one acre parcels on fifteen acres. So I guess the biggest concern I've got is we all bought it for that reason. That's the, the reason we're up there. And if we start allowing this, um, what's to say? Two or three other neighbors don't want to chunk off an acre and make a buck and it's, it's all about money versus um, making twenty more neighbors upset that we don't have what we bought there. I'll take any questions of anybody.
Gary, I have one. Is uh, Burke Fork a county maintained road?
It's a road district. W- we maintain um, Burke Fork and Gold Mountain Loop, which takes off right from uh, where the yellow, that loop that goes up around. So that's all in a road district.
Same road district or two, two separate same?
Same road district. So we would, of course, bear the burden of that. But uh, probably seventy-five percent of the road you see on there, um, a whole bunch of that, again, is so narrow that not the main, the, the lower. But again, you're setting a precedent that who's to say three other neighbors up there don't want to make a buck and chunk off an acre and they still got five? And now look at the problem we got up there. It's, it's a problem meeting somebody. That lower, that lower half, absolutely. Ninety percent of that, you gotta dive a car into the ditch to meet somebody. And well, make the road bigger. We can't without a stupid amount of money. The banks go up severely on both sides. So we're just, we're trapped by uh, forty-five degree banks on either side in a narrow ditch. And um, if we start this precedent, why wouldn't other neighbors move through? And well, I can still have four acres, but I can sell off one and makes no sense. It's, it's a rural setting and that's what it needs to stay. There's plenty of other places to go to have your half acre or acre.
Any other questions for Gary? Thank you. I appreciate it. Welcome. Uh, next request I have is John Newland.
My name is John Newland and I appreciate the hearing. Um, my property is lot twenty-four of Gold Mountain, which is the bottom most, furthest most corner. And we bought our property back in the eighties, uh, early seven, late seventies and uh, for a rural setting. And my objection is you're opening up a can of worms. If this property is all fourteen potential sites, what's the threat of the property below it to be opened up on a, a road that is already quite rough and ATV central? And uh, I guess that's my objection, you know? Well, I'm opposed to this.
Questions for John? Questions for John. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Then Dwayne is the last request I have. Please introduce yourself just for the record and go ahead and open up your conversation.
I'm Dwayne Goffey. We own a lot next to Gary Solomon, in fact, a lot of 18. We purchased our lot and land eight to 10 years ago under a zoning requirement that we could live with and wanted to live with. We wanted to move out here and be comfortable, not to have encroachment from similar things like this. If we open that up down there for that many houses or potential rentals, it would just destroy everything that we have. We didn't move here to make a, make a buck. We moved here to be comfortable. And that's what I would like to maintain. So I am definitely opposed to changing this ordinance somewhere, this zoning. It has been fine for all these years and there's no reason to change it. The other thing is that I think Gary or Mr. Newman had mentioned that Hill City outlawed any other vacation rentals. It's not appropriate to move out of Hill City to a agricultural area and have that rezoned for their purposes. I think it's very inappropriate. Other than that, I guess that's, that's all I have to say. I am definitely opposed to this rezoning. Thank you.
Just a moment, Dwayne. Questions for Dwayne? I have one. How long have you lived in the area now, Dwayne? Did you move here?
I think we've been here about 10 years now.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've, we've owned it longer than 10 years. At the time I was, I was working and to come here and drive a few nails on the weekends was all we could do. Right now I'm tired. I'm not going to do that anymore, but.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Dwayne.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience here? And the African isn't here and I don't see his agent today.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for staff. Cody, can you do me a favor? Can you pull up a map of what's around the area? And the reason why I'm asking this question is I don't see any low density residential zoning in there. So this would be putting low density residential out there. But my next concern is, is I look to the northeast, I see there's some lots. And I look southeast and there's some lots. The moment we put low density residential there, if you take that, your circle and you kind of move it and put that on the edge, now it opens those whole areas up for low density residential. Is that correct? Cause it would be, if somebody in those areas wanted to rezone, then they didn't, yeah, would have to say, well, there is already low density residential within a half mile radius or whatnot, right?
Correct. That's one thing we look at and we look at this. Oh, sorry. Cody's talking environmental planner. That's one thing we look at. We also, we also look at infrastructure in the area too, not necessarily just the, just the zoning. But yes, that is one thing that we, uh, we consider as well. So you just want a larger view of the zoning?
Well, in general, I'm guessing if these properties went to low density residential, that half a mile radius, if you put it on the edge, you can see it's going to pick up those lots up there to the right, the northeast. And it's going to pick up a lot of those lots down to the south and the southeast as well. Once you change that half mile radius on there. It might even pick up stuff to the, to the west. I'm not sure. But I'm just saying it, it opens it up. Correct. I understand infrastructure, but it also opens it up to say, well, we've already got that zoning within a half mile. So that's one more argument to suggest that someone who comes in can say, well, you've already got it within a half mile. Why can't we? It's just something to put out there.
Any other questions for Cody? I've got one.
I've got one as well.
Go right ahead, Kim.
Excuse me. So the little sliver that's on the east side of that lot, is that in conjunction with the larger lot? Does that make that 7.2 acres?
Uh, that's where you have to approximate. Yep, correct.
When we look at comprehensive plan amendments and rezones, do we have a routing that we use on those?
Yeah, it's routed out to departments. That's the interdepartmental review.
How about like a road district? Because we're looking more for the road districts to have more involvement in our vacation rental, uh, future too.
It should have been, I didn't personally route this one, but it should have been routed to the, to the road district. I didn't see any comments in the folder from the road district. But it should have been routed to him. Absolutely.
Okay. That would be a, a big thing in my mind because the road districts now, it appears the courts and actions are, are a lot more looking at road districts than some of these, what would you call it? Non-owner occupied rentals. So, okay. I just wondered whether it was routed because that's a, would be a factor in my mind when we're doing, taking an action like this. Any other discussion? Any, anybody from the audience? Please come forward and introduce yourself, please, for the record. And go ahead and state what you'd like to state.
My name's Randy Larson. I'm a road district, on the road district board out there. And we have some concerns with the traffic, the amount of traffic we've started to see lately because of the vacation rentals that are already there. We are a kind of a poor road district. Many, many of them are, I think. So we, we have our hands full just getting and keeping the roads passable. In fact, the last road work we did, we didn't have enough money to do it, but one of the neighbors up there gave us an interest free loan for a year. And that's what's going to happen the next time too. So we're in dire straits there and that concern is dust. And that Burnt Fork Road gets a lot of wear and tear. We can't keep gravel on it because those guys don't drive slow when they go around there. Another concern is they get to the Gold Mountain Loop entrances and this is ATV years, UTV years I'm talking about. They think that's a Forest Service road at first. So we get that traffic up in there too. Now we could signage that and fix that problem maybe. But nevertheless, it's existing now. So, and just to clarify one thing, you guys call this a dead end road, but we all know it's not. It goes into the Forest Service and that's why the ATV years and such go up there. That's something I have.
Questions for Randy?
Yeah, Randy. Do you know how wide that, that Burnt Fork Road is?
I think it's a 24 foot road, about approximately. You need, you need two, you can make two lanes on there and pass each other pretty safely on that.
And you got collector ditches on either side?
Pardon me?
You got water collection ditches on either side?
Um, on, on the west side, it's a big drop off there. Yeah. So that's not a problem. The other side is, is a problem because it starts to go uphill, steep. But we, we have, about every time we have road work done, we have to pull a ditch over there.
I have a comment. Um, I'm on a road district too. You could, for your finances, you could do an opt out of your, and levy an additional amount if your road district is poor. It's something you can do.
I might want to talk to you about that.
Talk to the auditor's office. You'd start the process through them.
Okay.
It won't make your road district members necessarily very happy, but to pay an extra levy, but it would help put money in.
I, I had a hundred percent signatures on this when I went around. So every one of them almost, so the person said, well, it right, I don't want to do it if it raises taxes.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm, I'm not even going to try that.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Randy. Randy, I've got one. And I assume that you guys are aware of it and operate the same. I'm on a road district. The idea that you have, let's say by a subdivision or a rezone, have additional membership available, you are not. And I want to do this just for the record. You're not in a position to have a sign on fee like a Waddle District or, or a sanitary district. In other words, where there's a tap fee to come on. You just start from, the membership starts the year they come on and that's all you get. If you have a, a fee, a levy, it would apply to that year only. You'd wait the year and get it the following year. Is that your understanding too?
I don't know. I've never looked into levies because as I say, I don't want to raise.
You don't levy right now?
No.
Have you done any special assessments?
No.
Okay. That may be something to look at. Our road district doesn't do any levies, but we do do special assessments.
Okay. I don't know what that entails.
It's a little, go ahead.
And if I might add, I've, I've dealt with road districts a few times and been in some conversations with them. And there's, there's many road districts that don't levy any taxes on the properties because they want to keep their taxes low. The problem is you can't complain about not fixing your roads if you don't levy a taxi, a tax on them. So you, you need to consider that. If you, long term, if there's other help that you desire or would seek, you won't be able to get that if you're not showing that you're generating some revenue. Again, I'm not saying that I don't like taxes either. I mean, I'm, I'm up here and I, most of my colleagues will tell you, and even the staff will tell you, I'm always fighting to figure out how to keep it lower. However, there are some things that you just have to do if you, if the, the road district is designed so that you raise your money to fix your roads. And if you're not raising your money to fix your roads, then you can't complain about it. Does that make sense?
It does. But, um, most of the people up there, and maybe all of them will tell you, they don't need the roads to be perfect. They just need them to be passable. And it takes everything we got plus to make them passable. We do Band-Aids is what we do. And there's, there's some advantage to that because you don't get a lot of looky-loos coming up a bad road.
Right. But what are you getting a lot of now? You're getting a lot of ATV traffic and it's damaging them. You know why they're coming up there? They like, they like that rough road.
Like that rough road. I know.
So, so what you're doing is you're, you're preventing looky-loos, but you're, but you're encouraging the off roaders, which is going to do more damage long term. Just something to think about. I mean, there's a lot of different dynamics that you have to consider whenever you have a road district. Yep.
Randy, I want to point out one other thing. All your property owners up there get a county tax reduction for not, unincorporated road tax. And this past year was 1.095 was the levy reduction for their valuation of their property. In other words, they get a discount already because you're a road district and all the members should know that. In the case of ours, we have 13 members. It accounts about $4,000, $4,500 a year in taxes that aren't paid on those properties so that we have a road district. That's something to consider. So they are already getting a tax reduction because of the road district.
How, how large is your district? How many?
Uh, ours is the about one and a half to one and three quarters mile and with 13 members. But we use a special assessment because we have two members don't like to pay. And the reason we do, I'll just be point blank about it. You can't pay your property taxes without paying your special assessment. So they always get a surprise if we had it. And we've only had three assessments in 15 years, I think. But we fixed a considerable amount of stuff when we assess. And say we have an assessment of $1,000 for every member. So we raised 13,000. But those two members, before they can pay their property taxes, have to pay the special assessment or you can't pay. And they don't want to see their name in the paper. So they grumble and pay their special assessment and then pay their taxes. That's why we did it. We actually have two members that just refused to pay.
Okay.
When it was voluntary, when it wasn't a road district.
Right. We did that too for, when it was voluntary. I mean.
What are you going to do? You know, you just walk away and somebody else, like you said, another member decided to donate, loan the money. In our case, there was a few members would donate the money. They'd just cover it and we'd pay our bills. So I understand a road district's a tough thing, but it's a good thing.
Yeah. It's better than it was for us.
Yes. Any other questions for Randy? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Might I add one thing?
Sure you can. Please introduce yourself again for the record.
Uh, Gary Solomon. Um, I guess we've neglected to mention something we're also kind of fighting. Right at the beginning of Burnt Fork Road, the Mickelson Trail takes a switch back there. And a lot of people will park right there to get on the Mickelson Trail. So, um, but right there, when you come off the highway, there's a new sign, pretty good sign, probably this big by this big, that announces that the Gold Mountain Mine is back that road to point whatever miles. So all of a sudden we're fighting that additional traffic on a lot of UTVs. Let's head back to the mine there. So back we go. So that's the road we're responsible for. I reached out to the Historical Society or I'm, I'm not calling it the right thing or whatever, to put the money behind restoring that mine to see if they would maybe help share in the cost because a lot of that traffic is from the mine. And they, they wouldn't. It was worth a try, but, um, and then again, to Randy's point, you know, you might say that's a dead end road. But by the time you even get to that mine or slightly farther, you can fork off on three roads. So it's a, it's an ATV delight in there. And the mine is just furthering the problem. So if we, if we stick, you know, open this door for, let's just say six, seven vacation rentals up there and the gentleman down below that owns that large acreage, what if he wants 10 or 15? There's just not the, not the roads to handle it or, um, you know, it's, it's just creating an ultimate burden on the rest of us. This morning, um, as I left and just got onto the highway where Burnt Fork Road, uh, one of the gentlemen mentioned there's three vacation rentals right over there. The one's quite large. Um, I counted four pickups with four trailers. One of them was about a 30 foot flatbed. And of those four pickups and trailers, there were seven ATVs sitting there. We see that all the time. And guess what? Right up our road they go. Cause that mine's cool and it branches off to many. So it's just an additional problem that we're fighting. And our road district is trying the best we can to keep that with the funds we've got. But the more density we add to that, the bigger the problem, the more ATVs and the unhappier 20 of us are for one person to make some dollars.
Gary, do, additional questions for Gary? Two quick things. One, the, the, uh, vacation home rail you're talking about is a PUD and, and they aren't your normal one particular parcel type. So they, it was a little different situation when it originally started. And, but the week before it had the semi parked in, in the front for the week. And I'm sure you noticed that as well. A big Kenworth with a, a full sized trailer, a little boy trailer in the same unit the week before. Is the mine not, is, is the mine outside of your limit of your road district then?
Right. Um, our road district, Randy could tell me if I'm wrong here, but, um, we go to about the end of the, um, seven acres in question. And then it would be another.
Before it goes into the Fed then?
Right. That'd be quite another stretch that's not road district going to the mine. So, uh.
That's a tough situation. We have others and I'm sure Travis, where people cross road districts and won't pay on the other end for anything.
Yeah.
That is a tough.
Yeah, they had, you know, a hundred thousand to fluff up the mine, but they don't have a couple thousand a year to help us.
To join the membership. Sure.
So for what it's worth.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else in the audience? All right. We're going to switch back to discussion, uh, then on the individual items. And the first item would be 14. We have discussed the, the items together. Discussion from the commission.
Mr. Chair, I guess in general, I wouldn't have a problem doing it to the, um, the rural residential, which is three acre minimum lot size. I don't know if I'm comfortable with doing the low density residential so that, um, as I.
I gave my concerns earlier, it opens the door. I know there's a lot of factors, but it just opens the door for that foothold to be in the half-mile radius area. And without the applicant being here, you know, we don't get to ask some questions to clarify some stuff. I heard that mentioned earlier, too, so.
Any other commission members would like to weigh in on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Kevin?
Zoning is put in place for a reason. And these lots are zoned in such a way that these people purchase their property, you know, understanding the zoning for their rural benefit. For us to reduce this down to a small residential lot size, whether it can or cannot be developed in the future, the zoning is still in place for it. So they may find a solution, or as the county grows, the road might be improved, and there could be other means for those lots to be divided. And so, and the other thing that kind of gets me as well is that these people are strictly doing it for vacation rentals in a, in an area that's filled with rural residential homes. And I know that if I lived on one of those lots, I would be very opposed to this as well. I fully support vacation rental stuff. I think it's a boon for our economy. But I think placement is the right, right, you know, the right zoning for those kind of properties. To develop this kind of property strictly for profit, I don't, I don't know that I necessarily agree with. I fully feel for these folks that have to maintain a road that's being torn up by ATVs, UTVs all day long. I mean, I wouldn't want to pay for my road to get repaired if somebody else is just going to come in and tear it all up. So those are just kind of my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I can't support the staff's recommendation either to move three zoning levels down. I would support, and the majority of that section is rural residential. I could put my vote behind that, but I can't take it down to low-density residential.
Any other comments? I'm going to weigh in here, too. But I'm uncomfortable changing people's requests without them present. In this case, I would be much more willing to go along with a continuance through the next meeting than I would be to change this request that they've got without either the applicant or the agent here. Is that something that would fly better with you, Cody?
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Yeah, that would be perfectly fine to continue it. However, they'd still, they'd have to re-advertise for the new, the new meeting date.
They would.
Yep.
Is that, wow. Megan, can you direct us on that?
Oh, if they wanted to change it to rural residential.
Oh.
Yeah, so Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. We've had this issue come up before. I've done extensive research on it. If this board is wanting them to do a different zoning district than the one that was actually advertised, it would need to be re-advertised pursuant to state statute.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Megan. All right, we know what we're facing, then. Then, actually, to be honest, I think it makes a continuance a more wise thing to do than leave the decision, at least so that the agent and the applicant can be involved. That would be my own particular comment on that. Yes. Go right ahead.
I respect your opinion, certainly. They're the ones that put this out. They're the ones that initiated all of this. They chose to not come. I'm sure they're fairly local. I came from Sioux Falls yesterday to be at this. If you initiate this, and you want to be here to put in your comments, maybe you should be here. Something I got to say.
Thank you. And we do have, just for the record, we also have some other submissions to us that we had on our desk, and we've read through ISO. Okay, we're at that point. We're back, we're off of the joint discussion. We're talking about action upon item number 14.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to continue Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 2219 to the next planning and zoning meeting.
And what's the date of that meeting, please?
It's October 11th.
October 11th. 10-11. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved in second to move Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-19 to continue it to the October 11th meeting. It's always open for discussion. Questions, Cody? Anything?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to point out, I understand, was it Randy that just came up here and spoke? I just, or Gary, sorry. I just want to make sure, we have a history of, if the applicant's not here, there could have been many reasons why they're not here today. Who knows? I don't know if they were planning on being here or not. Maybe they were, they got sick. I mean, things do happen. We do have a tendency to give a professional courtesy, if you will, that if they're not here, and we're going to make a decision, we will at least continue at once so that they can come in and hear the reasons why, and move forward from that. So that's the reason why I decided to go ahead and continue this item. And I understand you have to travel ways, but this commission also knows exactly how you feel, and they heard your testimony on it as well. So that's something that has to be considered when it's reheard as well, of how many individuals were here that were either for or against the item. So that's the reason why I went ahead and continued it, so we can at least reach out, staff can reach out to them, let them know where this board is thinking, or some of the concerns that this board has.
Thank you. I also was going to point out, Gary, that this is for the record, what you've entered into the record and all you folks have put on, it will be reconsidered. So will these items that we receive by internet or mail. And the membership does not change every meeting. We will have Mike Lewis, who's from Hill City area. He'll be here at the next meeting. He is absent at a family thing this time. And I believe we'll have a different liaison from the Board of Commissioners. Is that correct, Travis?
I believe this is my last one for this month.
Yeah, October, yeah. Come on up, Gary. Go right ahead.
Would, the next meeting, would you appreciate if several of us came again to the same, same?
Sure, of course.
It's on record, it's on record. I don't know.
Sure. It's always good to be here as well, just in case, just in case they present something different, you have, you have the capability to rebut as well.
Okay, we will. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair? He would be available to do it via Zoom, correct? Excuse me? He would be available to do it via Zoom, too, without attending. Yes, you could also do it by Zoom if you would like, as you are an out-of-towner. But anyone that would care to attend at the continuance, that's certainly the right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm unavailable on the 11th. I will be out of town. So I don't know that the applicant being here is going to change my way of thinking. So I just want to make that a point, is that my motion would have been to deny this, because I don't, I don't think separating into three lots is the right thing to do for this area. But I will go ahead and approve a condition, but I will not be here next, next meeting to vote. I just wanted, for the record, for my stance to be heard.
Maybe you'll be giving them an emphasis to attend. Thanks, just a little side deal there. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. We're on to item number 15.
Move to continue item 15, Rezone RZ 2225 to the October 11th planning and zoning meeting as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to continue the Rezone RZ 22-25 to the October 11th planning commission meeting, discussion from the audience. Hearing none.
October 11th at the same time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Onto 16.
Item 16 is the County Board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from their September 12th meeting.
Items from the public. Items from the staff. Okay, the membership, we actually have to have one, and Travis would slap me if I didn't. There is a potential even for additional meetings and some other actions, but we may see more in regards to the mining ordinance. There was a meeting last week held in regards to the mining ordinance. The Planning Commission got kicked around a little in it, just like all of us. So we may see that again. I just wanted to keep you folks aware that what a wonderful thing that is.
I don't want to see it again.
All right. That's the only thing I have to report, so we may see that again in the future. Is there a motion adjourned?
Wait.
Oh, go ahead.
I have a question.
Sure.
With the potential Friday closings, when will we get our packets? Thursday, okay.
Any other?
And just, as I mentioned before, Mr. Chair, I'll be gone the week of the 10th.
Okay, thank you. Any other items from the membership? Hearing none, how about a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.